I've called this meeting of the Christiansburg Town Council to order. And as we always do, I'd like for us to take a moment of reflection. Thank you. Let's draw our round for the Pledge of Allegiance, and I'm going to ask Councilwoman Russell Sacks if she would lead us.
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for what stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Were there any adjustments to the agenda? There are none. We have no public hearing scheduled for tonight. The next item is our consent agenda, the approval of council minutes, September 11th, 2018, monthly bills, purchase order for backhoe in the amount of $152,828, that is from Carter Machinery, contract for ignition SCADA systems in the amount of $145,000, authorization of a contract in excess of $100,000 to SCS Engineering for landfill professional services, authorization of a contract in the amount of $583,791 to Boxley Materials Company for reconstruction of John Lemley Lane and Howery Street. And schedule a public hearing on November 13th, 2018, for a conditional use request by David P. Hill, agent for Junkin Street Partners LLC, for a planned housing development to consist of a multifamily dwelling with up to 20 dwelling units on approximately 1.031 acre parcel, tax map number 527-127, located at 200 Junkin Street Northeast in the R3 multifamily residential zoning district. This property is designated as residential on the future land use map, Christiansburg, 2013 Christiansburg Comprehensive Plan.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda items.
I'll second. Got a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I do have one small discussion. I again reviewed the monthly bills, and there's a lot going outside of Montgomery County that I feel like should could stay in Montgomery County. And I know the expenditures are already done, so I'll approve them, but I'm disappointed. I just want to share that. I feel we can do better.
Were they on products? Are they on services? What are they on? I mean, is there equipment that we, for chemicals that we may be under contract, get a better deal on? Have you raised questions to that?
I have discussed it, and there's industries that I'm aware of, and there's industries that I've asked other people to look at, and there are, there's still funds going outside of Montgomery County.
Thank you.
We do have a presentation scheduled for the next council meeting in advance for our first consent policies.
All right. Any other questions or comments? There are none, Madam Clerk.
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop.
Aye.
Councilman Cuthbert.
Aye.
Councilwoman Sacks.
Aye.
Councilwoman Scholzner.
Aye.
That's five, only one of the introductions and presentations. We have several new employees to introduce tonight. On the last, Crystal Jones, the Aquatic Center Operations Supervisor, if she would start us off.
Good evening, Mayor Barber and Town Council. I would like to introduce our new lifeguard crew leader, Zach Clark. Zach grew up in Radford, Virginia, and attended Radford High School, where he was a multi-sport athlete, primarily in football and swimming. He swam for both the Radford High School swim team, as well as our own Bluefin Summer League Swim Team. Zach attended Virginia Military Institute, where he was a member of their NCAA men's swimming team. He spent three summers at the CAC as both a lifeguard and one of our Bluefin Summer Swim Team coaches. In May this year, Zach graduated from DMI, earning a Bachelor of Science degree in computer science, and he joined our team in August, and we're extremely excited and happy to have him on board.
Zach?
Thanks, Zach.
Welcome aboard, Zach.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Welcome aboard.
I'd just like to say, Mayor, that I go to the pool quite often, and I've always been impressed with the lifeguards. They always have a uniform on, and you can tell, you know, who's a lifeguard and who's not, and they really handle themselves well. And I think that's very commendable, and I'm sure the people who go to the pool feel good about that, too, that these lifeguards are on their toes and that they are, you know, ready to do a good job. Thank you for coming on.
Thank you, Zach. John Curtin, Public Works.
Good afternoon. I'd like this time to introduce Cody Anderson. He's a Floyd County native. He attended three years of New River College of Automotive Repair. His previous employee was site works, where he was the mechanic on all their equipment. And when he's not working, he likes to work on vehicles on his days off.
So he's going to be the mechanic?
No, he's going to be my new maintenance worker for utilities.
Very good. Thank you. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Kestrel Violet Travis Smalls, Public Works.
Good evening, Commissioner. This is Lucas Shuffin. He's a maintenance worker on the concrete crew, Streets Division. He went to Eastern Montgomery High School, where he played football and volunteered at Shawville Rescue. His hobbies include fishing and hunting, and he likes to work with his hands, so his child lets him do that. And previously, he worked at Dish as an installation tech.
Okay. Thank you. Welcome aboard.
Thanks, good job.
We have one other new employee that could not be here tonight, so we'll move him to the next meeting. Cindy Green Snider, the Small Business Loan Officer and with Virginia Community Capital, presented their loan program. Cindy, welcome.
Thank you. I'd like to thank Councilwoman Sacks for inviting me. I'm excited to be here. Most of you are probably familiar with Virginia Community Capital. We're a neighbor, right here in Christiansburg. But for those of you that maybe are not familiar with us, I was going to go over our programs and ways that we can partner in the community. So Virginia Community Capital is a CBFI, which basically means Community Development Money and Constitution. What that means is our focus is not just lending, it's also community impact. And so our mission is to support happening in communities, develop ventures, increase jobs, and build sustainable communities by offering flexible financial products and advisory services. So founded in 2006 by a former governor, Mark Warner, he took $15 million of state funds to seed Virginia Community Capital, and that was in 2006. So 2008, we formed a Virginia Community Capital Bank, and it is a regular state chartered FDIC insured bank. And we've also just recently expanded into our national footprint, which is Locust. So here you can see our focus areas. The VCC Bank is Virginia-focused, so we do loans, deposit services, we take investments in Virginia. And then now we've expanded to a national focus, which I'll cover just a little bit more of what that is, to give you kind of an idea of what that looks like. What we do there is we do foundations, to allow foundations to invest their money smarter and more targeted in communities. And I'll give you some examples at the end of the presentation of some foundations that we've worked with and what they're doing in their communities. So VCC has three offices. As I mentioned, we're in Christiansburg. We have an office in Richmond and then our Locust footprint, again, is the national footprint, so it is outside of Virginia. These are organizations, including the town of Christiansburg that has deposits with VCC, that this kind of gives you an idea of the breadth of the investments that we have. Here's our Board of Directors. You may see some familiar names. Most people know Bill Shelton, who retired from the HCD. He's on our board, and he may recognize some other names there. We appreciate our board. So our impact, what do we do with our money? This is what we do. We've made over $50 million in loans since inception in southwest Virginia, which would be, of course, our footprint here. And you can see the numbers there. I've given you this handout, so you can reference it later. I won't read all that information to you. And you can see by this fancy chart that we are growing. The chart on the right there shows the loans that we've done and loan volumes. So there's definitely a need for our type of financing in the Commonwealth. We're also a B-certified corporation. What does that mean? That means that we need to balance our revenues with our footprint and our social impact. So we're always looking at what is our impact in the communities. So here are three buckets. We offer lending, we offer investments, and then we also offer advisory services. So the lending, I'm going to break some of that down for you. One of the things that is really surprising to me, given the fact we're just a small lender, we have a total staff of about 60 employees. We're one of the state's largest solar lenders. To me, that's kind of surprising, but we have, that's an area that we've really focused and made some headway. Also, Cambridge Historic Tax Credits, New Market Tax Credits. If you know any developers that are working with those, and that's kind of an area of expertise and an area that I've seen that no one else is really assisting those developers. So keep us in mind for that. And then we're also SBA lender. And what does that mean? That means that we have the expertise and the infrastructure to be able to do SBA loans, which is the Small Business Administration. That provides a guarantee to entrepreneurs that maybe don't have the collateral, that they need to get a conventional loan. We can bring that SBA guarantee in to help them get that loan to start their business. Along with USDA and other guarantors, we use them as well to try to assist entrepreneurs. This is another exciting program that we just received some additional funding from the US Treasury for this, and this is to eradicate food deserts and give people and communities access to healthy food. So if you know of any maybe grocery store that has not, doesn't have the newer coolers and efficient, energy-efficient equipment, we can actually assist them with having an energy audit and see how much money that they would save if they would invest in newer refrigeration equipment, and can even assist them on getting rebates on the grant funding for that as well. So that's something that is growing, and we're real excited about that as well. Ways to invest. If you want to invest in your community, VCC is a great way to do that. We actually have a really good rate right now. We're offering 2% on 18-month CDs, and that's to, it is an effort to increase funding for affordable housing in your community. So if you wanted to, you know, do impact investing, you can do it as little as $50. It doesn't have to be hundreds of thousands of dollars, but you would know that your money is staying in your community, and it's helping with the different missions that we have. So our advisory services, we can work one-on-one with entrepreneurs that are looking to start a business, or maybe they're struggling, and they, if they need help with marketing, they need help with cash flow, we can offer that as well. We partner with communities, with chambers, and offer workshops. And then here's some specific targeted programs that we have. We partnered with the Allegheny Foundation in Allegheny County. They wanted to see economic growth in their community, so we partnered with them, and we've offered training and technical assistance loan funds for Allegheny County. The one on the bottom there is the New Economy Loan Fund. That one's specifically targeted from the HCD. They gave us funds to deploy in coal-impacted counties. So those counties listed there are a part of that program. Resilient Community Loan Fund, that's basically for any community that's received DHCD funds, which basically is all southwest Virginia, has received some type of funding from DHCD. That program is targeted towards those areas. And then I mentioned the Fresh Food Fund, and I won't go through every single one of these for you, but I like to let you see real impactful projects that we've done. This is an 80-unit development that we did in Richmond that helped homeless, low income, and then people with, that have physical or cognitive disabilities. We partnered with another bank and put that project together. Oops, started one too many. This one is a, you know breweries are all the rage, but North Hampton County did not have a brewery, so this was their first brewery. We partnered with the HCD for an IRF program, and then we also brought in SBA guarantee for equipment loan and gave them an express line of credit. So that's an example of a project that we did in North Hampton. This one's near and dear to my heart because I was the loan officer for this one. This was Mount Top Timber. It was two guys that used to be in the coal industry, and of course, with the decline of coal, they got into timbering. They did it for two years in an outdoor lot. I call it a mud puddle because they were finding the elements every day, but they've expanded to this new location. This building in Duganon was vacant for 20 years. We partnered with Scott County Tobacco Commission, VSCDA, and then the governor gave them an ag grant as well, and we did the SBA 504 guarantee. That business is going to produce 50 jobs in Duganon. Duganon has a population of about 300. So these are the type of projects that, when we look at a request, we're not just going to look at the loan amount, we're going to look at the job creation, are we saving jobs? What impact is it having in that community? And we're going to score those projects higher because that's very important to us, to see the impact in the communities. Thompson Charitable Foundation is another one we just partnered with, and that's for towns with low mechanic counties. They gave us $200,000 grant to provide training and technical assistance for entrepreneurs in those communities as well. And then those were just two other ones there. There's my contact information. I'd love for you all to follow us on Facebook, where anytime we have a new loan closing, we'll put it on there. I'm also on LinkedIn, and then that's my cell number. I'm always on it, rogue, traveling, cover all southwest Virginia. So anytime you have a project or something that you want to say, hey, is this something you guys can help us with? Give me a call, and I'd love to talk to you about it.
Any questions? Any specific areas here in Montgomery County that you would see that you could help us with?
Well, the latest thing that we're doing right now is opportunity zones. We're providing, we hired a consultant to help the communities learn how to maximize the opportunity zones, and we did just do one in Christiansburg not too long ago, but if that's something that you all would be interested in, we can always do a meeting and bring our consultant in and let you see how you can take advantage of that to get some investors in the community. It's a tax break for, to avoid capital gains tax. So there's a lot of money sitting out there that, they're looking for shovel-ready projects, so I don't know, you know, what, how that would fit into what you all have right now, but if we could help with that at all, we'd be glad to.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Just thanks for inviting her.
You all have my card and...
Your card and...
Yeah.
Pinned out. All right. Montgomery County Economic Development Director, Brian Hamilton, presenting regards to a potential Go Virginia grant application for development of a building pad at Falling Branch Corporate Park. Brian?
Thank you. Please excuse me, I've got a good sinus infection. Thank you again for your time. So a little bit about what Go Virginia is. We are in Go Virginia Region 2, which is comprised of Christiansburg, Blacksburg, Ramser, Runup, and Mentry. So that's the entire region that this state has designated. Our Region Number 2 has developed a growth investigation plan, and from that, they have prior kinds of community clusters, manufacturing, life sciences, and healthcare, food and beverage, emerging technologies that I see. And this is an extremely long document, and that's just summarizing basically what their goals are, is to create those types of businesses. So as you know, Montgomery County acquired Falling Branch Phase 2 in November 2017. Falling Phase 2 had joined Phase 1, and in order to apply for Go Virginia, knowing that two localities must put together an application and request for this. In this case, what we're asking the council to consider is Montgomery County, Christiansburg, the Economic Development Authority, will be the applicant for Falling Branch Phase So this is a map of Falling Branch Phase 1, Backcountry, Parkland Technology Drive, and then Phase 2 is this big green undeveloped area that just wanted to give you kind of a feeling. It's directly south of Backcountry.com, which was our largest lot, and 125 acres. So our goal is to develop the first pad, which is Tanner Yellow, and that pad can hold about a 620,000 square foot building. So the pad will need to be graded, road, water and sewer, fiber, natural gas, electric. All utilities will need to be installed. Currently, it's what, as it was when we bought it, just a rolling farm. So what we would like to propose is apply for Go Virginia for Falling Branch Phase 2 to include Montgomery County, the EDA, and the town of Christiansburg. So these are a lot of moving pieces, and this is the project as we're proposing. It's Go Virginia. We would request 300,000. Town of Christiansburg, water and sewer, 300,000. In your packet, you should have the latest estimates from H and D for water and sewer, not bypassed out, but what the town provided. So the latest estimate is 245, let's just say 46,000, not including engineering and not including approvals and time for that. So just round it up. And then apply for VDOT Economic Development Access Funds to get the road put in. At this point, Montgomery County's put in 2.5 million for the purchase of the land. The next steps would be the town of Christiansburg would agree to be a co-applicant. Economic Development Authority would submit a letter of tentative for Virginia for their consideration. This is truly a 10-page letter that they review and decide if they want to submit, allow up a complete application. There's going to be two rounds of funding in this will be in 2019, and the first round is due by October 15th. So we're coming here today to see if that round is, first round is possible.
Question? Yes, thank you.
Do you have someone who's interested in this?
No, sir.
Okay, so we're just putting this in the hopes that someone will...
The town of Christiansburg in Falling Branch Phase 1 installed all water and sewer with no quote-unquote tenant in place. The tenants came along. You have to have a pad-ready site, which means graded water, sewer, electric, fiber, natural gas, in order to attract a business. And right now, we're a good 18 months out before we could even place a business in the part of, in Phase 2, which is not acceptable to most industries.
It's my understanding that this is in the county, but maybe coming to town?
We have that. I am not in the middle of that discussion.
Craig and I are both agreeable to it coming to town. Basically, the ADA annexation agreement, we called for any expansion of the corporate park to be in town. And like I said, Craig's agreeable to that, so we do plan on bringing that in with the proposed boundary adjustment that we're working on now.
Do we need to vote on this tonight?
I think Brian needs a commitment from the town on this tonight in order to basically apply for the application. Brian's correct that we did pay for the water and sewer extension, because basically the development of Falling Branch Corporate Park. Of course, they purchased the land, did the grading, the stormwater, and also the grid extensions. And this will basically be in keeping with that. And I think the estimates call for about 248,000 in construction work and about $25,000 overestimate on engineering design. You could commit to funding up to 300,000. You could commit to funding the estimates. You could commit to funding more than 275,000. The commitment wouldn't come until next fiscal year, but he would want a commitment letter from the town. That's why we're with you tonight.
There's a lot of different pieces that go into this, like Montgomery County. Have you talked to them? And what is their reaction?
I was asked, as you know, Brett Meadows is my board director, to him, asked to begin to pull all of this together, all the pieces that would allow us to begin to fill out Phase 2. And so that's what is tempting to do. The Go Virginia piece is important because it will help defer some of the grading costs as we build the park. Have you talked with the NRVRC about helping us with this grant? They are aware that we are thinking of it, and so is Region 2's, not their board, Virginia Tech Economic Development, the managing organization. And at this point, we're just touching until we can get commitments to move forward.
And VDOT?
We've spoken with VDOT. Again, we, this is pretty much all contingent about, around getting Go Virginia funds that allows us to move down through the town of Christiansburg request, VDOT's request. We have spoken to VDOT, and so again, a lot of moving pieces.
So the commitment tonight is a, allows you all to get started, but if either of the other two fall through, then the deal's off? Most of the commitment's off?
The VDOT Economic Development Access Funds, if they aren't awarded, that would be very difficult because Go Virginia funds cannot be used for roads. So at this point, we're just trying to pull together the application and the application for the VDOT funds.
So our financial commitment would not take place until such time as all the pieces are in place?
Yes.
And it's a go?
Yes.
So it could be next year, we could be two years, and then VDOT funding?
Not next fiscal year.
Four years?
Yeah.
Or 26 years, depending on VDOT, anyway. Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Would it be possible to, if we did approve it tonight, and then it was two or three years down the road, could we be in the contingent that we would, if we vote on it again next year, if the pieces didn't fall apart this year? Can we do things like that?
I think the commitment letter would be binding.
Okay, it would be binding, okay.
Our goal would be to start construction no later than July 1 of next year, next fiscal year, and possibly sooner. But the water and sewer, there's significant work to be done.
Don't you have to wait something like five years for VDOT to do anything, really? You say it'd be next July for VDOT? Is that...
Yeah, we'll do their standard environmental review process. So we've done most of that in our due diligence, but we'd have to come back and do that formally. So again, we're just trying to move the project forward so that we do have an actual site where a company can locate it.
And right now, there's quite a few that are, are there people looking?
Yes. Yes, there's...
The economy's in pretty good shape right now, isn't it? And people are looking for things.
Yes, sir. The economy's in good shape. People are looking, and we can provide, say, if we have the land, if you have the time, generally, other countries, or, excuse me, other states to the south of us have product already lined up and invested tens of millions of dollars into it.
So this is just a state to pivot?
This is to get us, basically, to be able to back.
And as Ms. Snyder mentioned about the opportunity zones, this, the industrial park is...
park is within the town's opportunity zone that has been designated as such, so that this project, future project could be eligible for opportunity zone enhancements.
Right. Let's say someone wanted to build a shell building, for example, and they had 1031 light pound exchange, they could invest in a shell building from a sale, defer capital gains, meaning we defer the gains until, basically, in the 10 years. So, they're, being an opportunity zone does help.
We don't have anything in Deer Park right now that's ready to go, right?
The only building we have is the former Dishville.
Okay.
At 100,000 square feet. And of course, they have their new location in the mall. And 16 acres, which is not enough. Any other questions? Thank you.
Well, you're going to stick around, Brian, because it's coming back up.
I am.
And discussing, okay.
Thank you. Fire Chief Billy Hankstall, is this the Fire Department annual report?
That's the name of the mayor, council. It's a pleasure to be before you today to give you an update on where we're at with the Fire Department for the last year. Currently, staffing is the same as it's been for the past two years. We're still at 40 members. Of course, myself and the deputy fire marshal are the only two career staff we have. And we still have the 40 volunteer members that we've had for the past two years. We haven't had a change in membership, haven't lost anybody, and we're a full staff right now of 40. Near future, we're looking to go to 60 or 65, and that's to force to accommodate future plans for the substation on Run Oak Street. Volunteers continue to provide fire safety, talk station tours, and to the public and the special interest groups. Last year, we hosted 2,583 adults and children within our building, came into the Fire Department, and we talked to them about fire safety, fire prevention, and give the elementary school kids, preschool kids, tours of the department. We're still holding a Class Four ISO rating. When we did re-get our ISO rating several years ago, part of getting it down from a five down to a four was purchase of the Run Oak Street property for a future substation. I believe, once we have that station in place down there, we'll be able to drop that class rating down to a three, which will be even better. But it'll give our, give us a quicker coverage, response times to the top of Christiansburg Mountain and beyond Kirby Drive. Currently, right now, anything past Kirby Drive is an ISO 10 rating, which is not a good rating, and that's because it's outside five miles from the existing station. That's why we purchased the property on Run Oak Street, was to be able to get everyone in the Class Four rating and hopefully for a Class Three. 2018 was a very busy year. You can sort of see a breakdown of the type of calls that we run. Fire calls, we were right at 13%. Fires, types of fire calls include building fires, flu fires, cooking fires, vehicle fires, brush fires, and anything that burns. Rescue and medical is still the largest percentage of the call volume that we run. That's assisting the rescue squad with vehicle accidents, truck out to town in the county. 32% hazardous conditions that doesn't involve any fire, 12%. Service calls, just going out and somebody calls, and we'll just go check the smoke detector or if they've got an issue or a question or concern, is 7%. Good intent calls range anywhere from smoke scares to smoke orders to controlled burns, complaints of controlled burns and smoke, you know, from people doing brush fires and stuff behind their house and they're cleaning their yard up. And then fossil alarms. Fossil alarms are about 17%. And that's whether it's sprinkler system fossil alarms or regular fossil alarms, they run around 17% every year. 2018 through, first of 2017 and 16, you can see in 2016, we were on 505 calls for service in the town of Christiansburg, 323 calls for service in Montgomery County. 2017, we were on 508 calls in the town and 398 calls in the county, which was up 23% from 2016. That figure sort of flipped in 2018. 575 calls within the town of Christiansburg, up 13% from 17. 407 calls for service in Montgomery County, which is only up 2%. So, our call volume is steadily increasing every year, because we've seen this trend for the past three years. I can't see it ever decreasing. It's just going to keep going up. That puts more demand on our volunteers, more demand on their time away from their families, and it's getting to be pretty strenuous on the membership we have to be able to keep up with the amount of call volume that we're doing. Fortunately, we've always had a very, very good volunteer system on the Fire Department. It still is a very good volunteer system. But we're looking at ways of how we can adjust the way we respond to calls and still provide the service that the citizens deserve and not burn our people out, because we burn our people out, and of course, we know where we're headed after that. So, we want to remain volunteers as long as we can. That in itself is a huge tax savings to the taxpayers and to the town of Christiansburg. If we had to pay for all our firemen to be able to staff the Fire Department 24 hours a day, seven days a week, it would be a huge tax burden to assist. Fire inspections, Fire Department's Prevention Inspection Program, we started it three years ago when we hired the deputy fire marshal, Curtis Swift. Last year, he performed 1,434 inspections and re-inspections along with fire inspections. We also conduct sprinkler system firearm inspection testing during new construction phases, as well as final acceptance testings of any new building occupancy inspection. So, any new building that's built, any commercial building, any residential, multi-residential building that's being built in the town of Christiansburg, Curtis and myself are inspecting these things from the time of plans. We review the plans. We do all the plans review for the fire, firearm systems within the buildings. And we go out and we do the service testing on sprinkler systems from the time they are first tapped in on the town side until the time they're completed. Takes a tremendous amount of time and the amount of work that he and, he is getting done, mostly he is getting done, is tremendous to be able to produce 1,434 inspections a year of one person. That's just above and beyond. We also conduct acceptance testings and final approvals on commercial cooking unit systems. So, any new restaurant, any restaurant that builds or remodels in the town of Christiansburg, we do all the final acceptance testing on a new system to be sure it meets the EPA standards for the new system, make sure it's installed properly. We conduct food, conduct inspections on the food trucks or in the food truck rodeo as we did this past, this past Friday night, which those guys with the food truck rodeo are now welcoming us with open arms because they want to be safe and they put on a good show, DCI puts on a good show downtown. And they were, it was really beneficial for us to be there. We staffed the food truck rodeo this year. We had an engine and a small UTV that we could get down Main Street if we had a fire in one of the food truck rodeos, because you know, if anybody attended the rodeo, there's no way to get a fire truck down through there for the amount of people there. So, we put a smaller UTV unit in there. If we did have a fire, we were able to respond to it, and if it got bigger, then we have a bigger truck there to back it up if we... Worked out very well. We set up an emergency operations center at the 911 Center for this event with Major Ramsey's guidance on setting up an EOC for that from the police department. So, we had represented some fire, PD, rescue squad, and the dispatch center and the EOC to function during that event. We run that event, soil, like Brad runs his parks and rec events. We used his weather program inside, you know, if we seen a big storm coming, we could shut that thing down and get everybody out of town if we had to, timing that. Fortunately, the weather was great. We didn't have to, and I think therefore it was a success. We received two new apparatuses last year. We received a squad truck, both apparatuses, squad truck and a brush truck, this is all provided through funding, through capital replacement program with Montgomery County. Squad, we replaced a 1992 model vehicle with it, and the brush truck replaced a 1989 model truck, I believe. So, those are two new trucks. The squad will be here for at least 20 to 25 years, and the brush truck will probably have a longevity of probably 10 years, maybe 12 years. But all that funding was provided through Montgomery County, through the Fire and Rescue Commission's CIP program that Montgomery County funds and serves.
Did you get any money for the old ones?
Very little, very little. Old apparatus, you know, we put them on Gov. deals or either public surplus. They do not bring a lot of money at all. I think we got $4,000 out of the old utility truck we had, and we didn't get much more of that out of the brush truck that we placed. They just don't bring any money. We're very active in the Virginia State Firefighters Association, as well as the Southwest Firefighters Association. Nathan Brubaker from our department was the president of the Southwest Firefighters Association last year. He hosted a conference in Run Oak. David Akers is still a committee member with the Virginia State Firefighters Association. He represents his district and the town of Christiansburg and us on the State Firefighters Association. This is a lot on Run Oak Street. This year, we're going to be working on conceptual design for the building on Run Oak Street. With, you know, my request is that council, council not forget about this project. You know, we bought this piece of property to try to reduce ISO ratings on that end of town and get everybody in the town of Christiansburg in the correct ISO rating. This project right here, we're going to start working on conceptual design so that council will be able to see, you know, what we have planned for that lot and what do we need for that lot? You know, we're trying to figure out what do we need in a substation building? How many bays do we need? How big of a building do we need? Do we need meeting space? Do we need to make it to where we'll be a 24-hour station? Because when we build this station right here, it needs to last 50 years. So, we're putting a lot of thought, a lot of effort into to be ensure that when we present to you as council, that this is pretty much firm of what we would like to have, but we want it to be the best thing for the buck. Training, we're constantly training. Got a lot of new equipment. That squad has a lot of equipment on. We did a lot of hazmat training in the past year, rope training, swift water training, water flow training. We're constantly trained, constantly, 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 to be sure that we can handle any type of incident in the town or in Montgomery County if needed. Fire departments work with other fire departments in Montgomery County to help develop the regional fire training center on Merrimack Road. We broke ground about a month ago for the new burn building that we received on grant through Montgomery County as a county-wide grant for all the fire and rescue departments in Montgomery County. We'll be building a $470,000 burn facility down there where we can go in and do actual, do live fire training with our firefighters. We'll be able to take all of our firefighters to this facility anytime, anytime we want to. You know, we don't have to schedule to go to Run Oak. We don't have to schedule to go to Pulaski County. 15 minutes, we're down Merrimack Road, and we're in a facility where we can train our people and do live fire training with them anytime we want to. We've already got through the Blacksburg Fire Department Foundation, they purchased the piece of property, which is on sewage treatment plant down on Merrimack Road. They have started developing the building, the, what's that building right there? Yeah, right there. Maze building, the Blacksburg Fire Department Volunteer Foundation built that building that has a maze in it, which is the maze up here in the left-hand corner. We build mazes in there. We put blackout mask on our firefighters, and we let them crawl through this maze to be able to do search and rescue and find their way through the maze in a controlled environment with no fire. And once we were assured that they can get through the maze and are not having any issues and not claustrophobic and all that, then by the time we get this burn building, we can put them in this burn building and do training with them full-time. Blacksburg Fire Department received down the lower right-hand corner, $50,000 grant to the Department of Fire Programs for a flashover simulator. We can go into that simulator and teach our firefighters about flashovers and what to look for and what, you know, they go into the house and they start seeing the smoke conditions change and the heat's starting to change. We can train them on how to get out of that house to protect themselves and not be stuck in a thing for so long. Blacksburg Volunteer Fire Department Foundation also purchased two mobile classrooms that they've installed down there, and our members, as well as our Public Works Department, have done a lot of work down there to help with this facility. Two years ago, maybe three years ago, we, Public Works came in and made a water line force on the weekends. Jim Nansenese, John, and the rest of the crew, that they assembled down there, came down and installed the water line from the road up to the facility so we would have fire hydrant water capability at the burn building site. So, we're really excited about this training facility. It's going to be available not only to us, but to every fire department, every rescue squad in the county. It's here local. We don't have to travel a lot to get to this type of training like we've had to do in the past. But we're really excited. Like I said, we had the groundbreaking for the burn building. If every Department of Fire Programs and general facilities, our Richmond approves all the plans for it, we'll be ready to start construction sometime toward the end of October. Growth through Opportunity, we were honored to get to partner with Montgomery County Sheriff's Department and other law enforcement agencies to participate in the GTO program, Growth Through Opportunity. You may be familiar with Growth Through Opportunity. It may not be a submission of the GTO to death program to enhance quality of life for the associates. Our goal is to be a partner with public safety agencies and businesses nationwide to offer our highly successful mutually beneficial training program, promotes a productive, promotes a productive employment of individuals with intellectual and developmental skills. It's absolutely the best program, the best partnership we have ever partnered with. I honestly believe that. We have, not only have we changed these people's lives, they've changed our lives. And we, we've seen how they have grown and how we have taught them to be productive in society. And the goal of this program is, is through the training course, chief, I can't remember how long, of course, is it 16 weeks? 12? 12 weeks, maybe. We've seen after 12 weeks that our goal is, or the goal of the program is, is to, for these kids to be able to have productive jobs in society, and we've seen that happen. So, I'm very, very honored, and my guys are very honored to get to participate in that program. We also partnered with Virginia State Police and Christiansburg Park and Rec Team to host the heat events, which is VIN etching vehicle, identification number etching at the fire station. We hosted two events last year and had 20 vehicles. That's a little bit down from the year before. I think the year before, we were closer to 60 vehicles. But what they do is they come in and they take your VIN number on your vehicle, and they etch it in glass on every piece of glass on that vehicle. If your vehicle is stolen, then they can trace that VIN number back off of different pieces of that car to try to help locate your car. So, that's a very, that's a, that's a good program we continue to support. Caribbean Clinic Car Seat Program. We've been doing this for several years, allowing Caribbean Clinic to come into the fire station, along with the PD and other, the Sheriff's Department and other groups to come in to help Caribbean install car seats. And they do child car seat installations to make sure that they're, they're put in and put in properly. The Effort Event, another, another huge event that we are so blessed and honored to be a part of, Enabling Friends for our Response Teams. This is a program where special needs, children and young adults can come into this program and get used to us so that they can be, so that we can be used to them. And we put them through different scenarios. We make them a part of the team. We allow them to squirt water through the fire hoses. PD runs them through mazes and obstacle courses. But the whole, the whole idea behind this program is right here that, that, you know, we don't want these, these special needs kids and young adults to be afraid of if we ever have to come help them. We want them to know that, you know, we're, we're the good guys. We're, you know, we want them to be part of us, and we're very blessed to be able to be part of that program. First ever Christiansburg Fire Department Teen Academy. We hosted that this year, and we hosted it at the fire station and down at the training facility in Merrimack. We had 10 high school students sign up this year for a two-day event. We're probably going to expand it to a four-day or a five-day event next year. Very well received. We put them... We put them through the daily life of what we do, you know, why we do it, how we do it, and the benefits and rewards that we get as volunteers when you volunteer with the fire department. Very, very good class. We dressed them up in turnout gear. We sent them through the mazes. We had six gentlemen and four girls. And the girls excel exceptionally well. I think they showed the guys up this year. So we showed some of them that, you know, it's just not, not just, not just guys that can be firefighters. There are some very, very good female firefighters in the world and we're hoping to plant a seed there with this Team Academy that maybe after they're through the school, that maybe they'll come back and volunteer for some time. But big success, huge success, great two-day event, and we're going to do it again next year. Had a lot of my members, you know, volunteer, they work other jobs, they took time off from work to do this event. And I've got commitments, I'll only be in for next year to take the week off if we decide to make it a week event. So, you know, I think it shows the dedication of our people to try to get out here and reach out to the younger kids to bring them into the fire service if we can. The community activities, Willem Astral, the Institute of Radio, the Fall Festival, Fire Prevention Parade, which is next Tuesday night. We invite council and everyone here to come to the Fire Prevention Parade next Tuesday night. We pull out at 7 o'clock. We do touch a truck at the mall. We do Christiansburg Aquatic Center Summer Camp, the Virginia 811 Race, which is sponsored by Atmos Energy that they, they host for us every year. And then they, we're the beneficiary of the pot for the VA 811 race every year. And last year, we received a check from Atmos Energy for $10,000 for co-hosting the event with them. So we just had the 811 race in August. I haven't got a figure yet, but hopefully it'll be as good as maybe, maybe it'll be as good. Very well attended. And then of course, Christiansburg, Christiansburg.
Didn't you have a team that do real well in the thing at the aquatic center?
Battleship. We went down like a big rock.
Good chance to do it again Friday night, don't you?
We'll have another chance to redeem ourselves Friday night. We've got three teams that will be in the Battleship event for Friday night. We're looking forward to redeem ourselves each year. This past year in Virginia Beach, I was humbled to receive the award, the Governor's, Governor of Virginia's Volunteer Fire Chief. The department submitted this application on my behalf, totally unfounded that I received the award. Very honored, very humbled. What made it special was the career volunteer, the career chief of the state of Virginia that received the award was Keith Bauer from Loudoun County. Keith and I started at the same time. Keith has since retired and moved on to South Carolina. Like three days after he received the award, he went shagging. He went to South Carolina. But he, he had been with Loudoun County for 35 years now, so well-deserved retirement. But what that really made it special too was to be honored with Keith because Keith and I had sort of gone through the chairs of everything together. A few more groups we're associated with and we have members that participate in different, different ways and forms within their own board of directors or sitting on district seats. Fire Chiefs Association, Fire Prevention Association, International Association, Orson Investigators, State Fire Fighters Association, National Fire Fighters Association, Department of Fire Programs. And we've been here since 1911 and this is just sort of a little snapshot of who and where and why. Paul Hall, the gentleman up here in the corner, when Chief Hall retired from the fire department, he had 62 years of service with the fire department. You see, running furniture store downtown for many, many years. And Harold Ladd, who was over here, was our secretary treasurer for almost 32 years. So we miss those guys tremendously. That's part of our heritage that we don't ever want to forget and we keep growing and building and moving forward. Any questions?
Go ahead, Steve.
I have a comment that I think a lot of people, when they come to Christiansburg, one of the reasons they come is because of the excellent service they get through the fire department, the police department, the rescue squad. And I think all three of your departments just have a great reputation and it's well-deserved. And on council, we appreciate that.
Thank you.
We really do.
Thank you. It's, it's an, it's an honor to get to work with Chief Sissom's group and Chief Cole's group. I think we have the best working relationship I'd say we've ever had in the history that I've been here. It's just, it's a great group of professional, you know, professional individuals that work together for the common cause and that's to keep, you know, the citizens of the town of Christiansburg safe and healthy and maintained. But it's an honor for me. This is my 37th year on the fire department in Christiansburg, rapidly approaching nine years as the chief and it just doesn't seem possible some days that it's been that long. We, you know, we definitely appreciate council's support on everything that you support us with. We continue to work to work as efficiently as we can and without, you know, the leadership that we have with Manager Leinfield and Andrew, who's now the assistant town manager. I'm looking forward to him, him working with Andrew more and definitely without the support of council, we couldn't do, I mean, you guys take care of us very, very well and I don't think I'll ever come to you, as you've said, and I would be. I need money for Roanoke.
How hard is it to recruit?
Very hard, very hard. At one time, at one time, we consistently kept about 20 applications on file. I'll be willing to bet that we have not received 20 applications in the past year. We've probably got five applications on file right now. Takes so much time. I mean, it absolutely takes so much time.
But aren't you limited by your charter of only 40 members?
We are right now. We're, you know, like I said, we're revising that right now. Committee's actually working on it tonight and we have been working off the center once. We're going to go to 65. And, and that's going to help us some, but we don't have, we don't have 25 applicants right now either. So, but you know, when we, when we get to that point, we'll start doing an aggressive, you know, membership drive and see what happens. It's just such a time-consuming, you know, profession and we're on the road so much. You think about the time that everyone leaves their families to, to go get on a fire truck and go save somebody's property or get on a fire truck and go help someone that's involved in a wreck. It takes a tremendous amount of time. You, you leave your house to go on call, you might not be back for two hours. And it's two hours away from your family and it's two hours away from your job if you're fortunate enough that you can leave your job. Employers won't let you leave your job anymore. When I started, you know, there were five people in, in the business that I was working in that was members of the fire department and the owner of that business let all five of us leave to go firefighting. You don't see that. So, you know, it's getting tough. It's getting tough. But that's the stuff that we're looking at, stuff that we're addressing right now to try to, try to make this longevity last.
Do we come through Florence pretty well?
Come through what?
The hurricane.
Absolutely. I think it split us out. I mean, Randy and I were talking the other day, I think maybe Andrew and I spoke briefly through voice messages, but I didn't have any reports of any damage that come to us. I don't know if the public works got in here or not. But, you know, we stayed out, we staffed around the clock for that event. And I was out most of the weekend just watching water and watching stuff. But I think all in all, I think we, we fared very well from Florence, something like, you know, Shawville, Alston and the city of Haverford. And I think it split us out. I think we got, we dodged a bullet this time.
Yes, sir. On your new site out here, we haven't forgot about you. As a matter of fact, a couple of us have been discussing it and we're talking about putting it on a work session, but you have determined that we need to know what you guys want first.
Correct.
And I'm glad to hear you're getting ready to do that. So let us know what we can do to help you.
Absolutely. I think.
And let's get this on the run.
You know, that, that we need to have something to show you.
Yeah.
We need to be able to show you what we're looking at, why we're looking at that and come up with, you know, we've got to have a footprint.
Yes, sir.
Decide what kind of footprint is there. It's easy for me to pop up and say, you know, I need $4 to $8 million to build this station. Can you say what do you need?
Yeah.
We need something to show you.
Yeah.
We need something to show you what we're looking at.
And you also have access to some firefighter, uh, uh, construction grants, right?
There are no, there are no firefighter construction grants for fire stations available.
Okay.
The only one that is available, myself and Manager Leinfield and Andrew went to a grant thing that Morgan Griffiths offered. The Assistance to Firefighters Grant in 2009 stopped giving construction grants to build fire stations in 2009. The USDA does offer a construction grant to build a fire station, but it's limited to populations under 20,000, therefore we don't offer. So, you know, we're booking, we're looking at.
Yeah, yeah.
We're looking at alternative funding, but as far as there being a magic pot of gold out there, I haven't found.
Okay.
Still looking.
Thanks, Chief. And all this stuff that you've accomplished this year and for you to be selected as the chief of the year, that's awesome. I mean, that's just awesome, buddy.
Humble, very humble.
Yeah. Well, you're the best at your job.
Never, never would have dreamed that, you know, 37 years ago, I would have received your award.
Well, we're lucky to have you.
Thank you.
Seriously.
That's much deserved.
Yeah.
I got a quick question. How many of those rescue calls would you say, if you know the percentage offhand, are 81, are interstate 81?
Not as many as you would think. There's a lot that's still not as, and I can get that number. We can break it down, but it's not as great as you would think it would be. Because we were, we were sort of, we looked it down and we were sort of unfounded that I would have thought that would have been higher. And it's, we actually run more accidents here in town than we do on 81. The accidents in town aren't as massive as the ones on 81. The ones on 81 that we have are a whole lot bigger and a whole lot longer to deal with. But we actually run more accidents in town.
How far out do you go?
On 81, we cover from the 105 to the 125. So Kielaski County line at the bridge to the crossover where we go over the mountain to Arroton. So we're looking, you know, both lays are looking about 82 lane miles roughly, I guess, are about of 81 that we cover. Probably the worst section of 81 we covers from about the 121 mile mark or to the 123.5. That's probably northbound. So, you know, anything that we can do to contact Mr. Griffiths or Nick Rush or people like that when we're talking about the I-81 issues and the coalition, we really need to push them to look at northbound 81 from the 118 to the 128, in Roanoke County's case, all the way to the 141. Because they have a stretch of road in Roanoke County that's just as bad as ours. All of ours is all downhill and it's currently there's a stretch. But that's probably the worst section that we've got.
Well, Chief, I think you run a great department. I saw the Team Academy on Facebook and I thought that was really neat and I hope you can continue that every year. And are you planning on, is the department planning on participating in the ACE program?
We are. We have two students in the ACE program right now. I've got one girl that's loves to clean and loves to take care of stuff. And I've got another girl that's absolutely a computer genius and she's helping us with paperwork and some forms and stuff that I've been trying to put together for several years and just haven't had time to do it, but she's working on that. So I've got two this year and we're hoping to get some guys next year. I don't think, it's probably my fault that we didn't get more than we did because I didn't go out and really push for it because I didn't know how we were going to use them. You know, we can't put them on a fire truck because they're not a fire train. So, you know, a lot of kids that wanted to come to fire stations are, wanted to ride the fire truck, just like firemen. We can't just take a teenage kid, put them on a fire truck, put them in a burnout here and stick them in a burn and do them like they do. So we were trying to figure out how we could best serve the kids and get them into the building, you know, through that ACE program and make it beneficial to them. So we got, we had four, the four females that wanted to come to the station, we only ended up with two, but they're doing a great job and we want to be finished up at the end of October, though we'll be finished up about November, all the time. So, you know, they've been there, they've been there since August. They're going to get their 80 hours in in three months and they're done for two years. Two-year free education for the kids and a little bit of time back to the community. So.
When do you think you'll be able to show us that projection of the Roanoke?
Roanoke Street?
Yeah.
Uh, maybe by first year. Shooting for it. We've got, we've got some stations that we're going to go look at over the next two weeks to get some ideas. We already know about what the square footage is going to be, but we need to really go look at some things to be sure that we got our square footage where we need it. So I'm shooting for first year.
Excellent. Thank you.
Unless you want a quicker. If you want a favor, I'll see why.
Before budgets and first year reward.
Absolutely. That'd be great. Any other questions?
Thanks, Jim.
Thanks, buddy.
Next on our agenda, Jim Hawley to present a potential donation to the town of Christiansburg from Nancy Nixon, Margaret Thompson and Joe Thompson. Jim, we're excited to hear what's on your plate.
Thank you, sir. I'm Jim Hawley. I'm a citizen of this town, Christiansburg, for the last six years. And I'm a neighbor of Joe Thompson, who was fighting cancer. Felt like he wouldn't be strong enough to come here tonight to read this to you. So if you bear with me, I'll read this next to you, okay? Mayor, Mayor, Barbara, I'm sorry. Town council members, Town Manager Leinfield, Assistant Town Manager Warren, Events Director Jim Jenkins. From Nancy Nixon, Margaret Thompson and Joe Thompson. The three of us have been residents in our fair town for over 125 years combined. As two different family units, we have been fortunate to have traveled over much of our beautiful United States of America and over part of our planet. And as Dorothy said in Wizard of Oz, there is no place like home. And yes, there is no place like our hometown, Christiansburg, Virginia. For many wonderful reasons, we are proud to be Christiansburg residents and we are happy to share with you that one of these reasons is that we acknowledge and appreciate you, the town council members, the town staff, your predecessors have managed our town affairs quite well for over 75 years, of which we have awareness. Along the way, the town has managed in a conservative, progressive manner that we applaud and understand can at times be challenging as a tightrope to walk. Well done and thanks. Goal four of our town's Destination 2022 Adopted Goals says in effect that you want and desire to have, and we quote, "A town well-informed and actively engaged citizens." Well-informed we will see, actively engaged we mean to be. Goal one of your 2022 Adopted Goals says that you want our town to be an active destination for culture, recreation and entertainment. One note at this point is to say that goal one does not say the destination be downtown Christiansburg. In preparation to make the following offer, our research led us into our town's extensive online information about the goals you have for our community. Your comprehensive, long-range plans and your current initiative, which motivated and challenged us how we could be engaged to give back to this wonderful community. We love our hometown. To jump right into the deep end of the pool, we desire to donate to the town of Christiansburg $100,000 to be used to help the town facilitate your plans to achieve goal one and three. The town will have to apply for grants to create many of the programs you desire. This contribution can jumpstart your programming ideas without relying on the uncertain grant process. Since the town has decided to permanently close Hickok Street to make this location an event center, in action we regret, we regret respectfully request that our donation in no way, either directly or indirectly, be used to support or promote any activity at that street location. Continuing on a positive note, we would like to engage in Continuing on a positive note, we would like to engage in dialogue with the town and we are prepared to suggest a number of ideas how our donation might be used to help the town of Christiansburg achieve goals one and three. Here are a few ideas and suggestions. We think the ice skating rink you per, you have purchased ideally should be placed where else? At the state's park, I'm sorry, at the town's skate park. In the winter months, the skateboard ramps located at the front of this park could be dismantled and stored outside at the back of the park. And the portable ice skating rink could be installed there until the weather breaks in the spring. Likely, the skateboard ramps could be repositioned in a way that they could, there, they could stay there permanently and at the same time allow room for the ice skating rink. This location has it all, flat concrete surface on which to place the rink, parking in the front, picnic-type tables for family seating, three of which are covered, restroom, electrical access, floodlights, trash receptacle, high visibility from the heavily traveled North Franklin Street, and great exposure by the folks using the CAC. In addition, the town staff on duty at the nearby CAC could easily oversee the skating activity. Combining these two skating activities into one location should save the town and we taxpayers a good amount of money each year. Now, our donation could be used to promote this central skate recreation activity. Culture part of goal one, some of this money we are prepared to donate could in turn be given to Montgomery County Museum to help them kickstart their plan to expand their facility. The museum is already a center for artists of all stripes, literary events. Why reinvent a wheel? Help our local museum be the cultural focal point of the town of Christiansburg. As a matter of fact, your own town council member, Steve Huber, organized and held Music of the 1920s, Music, Humor, and History event there on May 24. Goal three says you want Christiansburg to be clean and green, healthy and safe community, and so do we. Perhaps the town should consider using that catchy phrase, especially clean and green, part to promote Christiansburg. Our funds could be used to support a slogan like that. We have a suggestion regarding your townwide recycling program to share with you. We believe your vice, your vice mayor, Sam Bishop, expressed, expressed his concern that the $5 monthly fee that every household in our town is required to pay might be a financial burden for our low-income hometown neighbors. We have great sympathy for, for that concern, as we all know town council members do as well. Our two households each offered to have our town monthly bill increased to $10 for this wobbly recycling service. An extra $5 to be used to pay that fee for one of our Christiansburg neighbors most in need. The town would have the burden to screen households to determine the financial eligibility, but we are confident many Christiansburg residents would joyfully join such a program. We would be pleased to have some of our donation be used to promote a program like this. If you would accept, if you would like to accept our financial offer, and if, and if we have a so-called meeting of the minds on a few details, we are ready to make this happen quickly. We look forward to your response and again, there is no place like home, Christiansburg, Virginia. I have a copy of this for each of you.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you for bearing with me.
Thank you, buddy. I think Avery, I'll get it. Sorry. Thanks, sir.
Did you get one for Brad?
Got one right here.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have citizens' comments. We don't hear to address the town in the citizens' comment section. Seeing no one, I'll close that portion of it. Committee reports. Nothing, Steve?
No, sir.
I know Brad doesn't have anything.
No.
Same. Harry?
Yes, sir.
Discussion and action by mayor and council. The first, uh, to do the item is to re, the reappointment of Richard Ballenge to the New River Valley Agency on Aging Board and Steve Hubbard as, as alternate, October 1, 2018 through September 30, 2019.
I'll make a motion that we reappoint, uh, Richard, uh, Richard Ballenge, uh, to the New River Valley Agency on Aging Board and Steve Hubbard as his alternate, October 1, 2018 through September 30, 2019.
Second.
I just wanted to throw that, this in here, I've been the, um, assistant there for several years now and I, I don't want people on council that think that I'm too, you know, grabby on these, uh, good positions like this. And if somebody else on council would like to take my place, I think that would be acceptable to me.
Steve, I think that just shows you're older than most of us and you've earned that position. Do I have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, is there any discussion?
I have a comment. Once again, like we did before, Mr. Ballenge is not here, so either we going to have people be here or we're not going to have them be here.
Oh, no, deliberately didn't invite Mr. Ballenge, I think in part because you probably all know him so well, having been mayor.
So, we're going to have two sets of rows, I mean, not as many as what we have.
Well, I, I think on occasion, if it's somebody that we're familiar with, all of us, we've, we've gone ahead and appointed them. I don't see any reason now, I mean, it was hard for me to say, uh, Richard Ballenge because it's either Principal Ballenge to me or Mayor Ballenge, I've heard many years and I think we're all familiar with him and of course, uh, our infamous Steve Hubbard down there. So, um, I don't have a problem with it, but.
I think in the past, in the past, uh, I think when we did the, the Grimmer Solid Waste Authority, we excused Al Bowman, who has come every time he's reappointed and, and we all, we all know of Al, so, uh, I'm gonna call for a vote.
Well, it would, it's already on the table for a vote, so.
Aye.
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sachs?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
That is 501, thank you. The resolution recognizing the eligibility of Line Duty Act benefits for volunteers of Christiansburg Fire Department and Christiansburg Rescue Squad. Just one, Phil?
This is, I guess, similar to the situation we had with, uh, workers comp for volunteers of the Rescue Fire Department. We were already kind of receiving that through the state. This is similar, we actually are, they are receiving those benefits, just we need a resolution on file with the state. So, we're actually really part of that program now, just state is requesting a resolution in that regard.
I'll make a motion that we approve the resolution recognizing the eligibility for the Line of Duty Act benefits for volunteers of the Christiansburg Fire Department and the Christiansburg Rescue Squad.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop? Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sachs?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Again, 501, thank you. Consideration of a potential GO Virginia grant application for development of building pad, of a building pad in the Soling Branch Corporate Park.
I'll make a motion that we approve the, uh, potential GO Virginia grant application for development of a building pad in the Soling Branch Corporate Park.
I second it.
You've got a motion and a couple of seconds.
Do you want to specify dollar amount? The estimate was, I think, about 248,000 for the, uh.
Well, there's 300,000 up there.
It was, but the estimate, I guess, the last estimate I received was 25,000 for engineering design and just over 248,000 for, uh, construction of the water and sewer lines.
So, could we amend that to up to 300,000?
Could say up to 300,000.
I'll amend that to up to 300,000. Second.
The seconds still stand?
Yep.
Madam Clark? I'm sorry, discussions? Well, um, some of this money will be done by our own, own people, which, the 250,000 is going to come from where?
It, it would be from next fiscal year's budget.
Okay. And will some of that be able to be done by our own people?
No, this would be contracted.
Contracted.
Well, I'm supporting this, I think that's what the citizens expect out of us for economic development and this is a spirit in the economic development of Soling Branch has been a, a success for our community and, and the county especially. So, we're, we're as, as a town, we're continuing to do our part for economic development.
Thank you. Any other comments? Madam Clark?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sachs?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
That is 501, thank you very much. Staff reports, Mr. Town Manager? Nothing. Town Attorney?
Nothing to report.
Any other staff to report? Council reports, uh, Mr. Collins?
Okay, uh, they had the, uh, the walk this past, uh, Saturday and the rec center headed it up and I understand, it went great, uh, I wasn't able to make it. And, uh, the rec center excelled in putting this on, I understand. How many people were there, Steve? Do you know offhand?
My baby.
Okay.
Had 86 sign up, I think I had a head count somewhere around 50, 55.
Okay.
You were there, right?
Sure was. Did walk, but I was there.
Yeah.
I did my normal duties. I did go up there. Mr. Bishop?
Uh, yes. Yesterday, we had the goat, yoke, yoke, we goats, whichever you want, we want to call it, in case someone blows their horn. But anyway, I think there was a turnout of what, more than 50 people showed up for this.
65.
How many?
65.
65. So, it was a great turnout.
Do you have film, video of that?
Yeah, it's on.
Yes, we do.
My wife, my wife was participating in petting a goat.
Yeah, I didn't participate, I couldn't hurt myself. It was a great turnout.
It was neat.
It was neat. I'm glad you answered.
See what?
We'll do that two more times in October.
Very good, very good. Special talk.
I don't.
You're good. What's happening?
Well, I just wanted, you were probably going to say something about it, uh, about the truck rodeo, uh, what was last, was Friday night? And, uh, I don't know, I think they had 20 trucks and they were all hopping. And what do you think attendance, five, six thousand?
10 to 12.
10 to 12, yeah. I was there around eight o'clock, it was, it was hopping, but I think you were there the whole time, weren't you?
Pretty much, up until about 9:30.
Yeah, well, it was just a big, weather was great, they had just a big success.
It was, it was good. Ms. Sachs?
The only thing I, I have to add is, um, Christiansburg Institute has Cooking Around the World, October 6th, from noon to 3:00 at the rec center. So, I'd like to encourage everybody to attend that if they can.
If you have never been to that, it is well worth, as far as the ticket. And I'm just glad they're doing it now, now, instead of when I'm, normal, when they normally do it, because they always do it when I'm in Mexico, so.
And also, um, I have the pleasure of being with the Virginia State Police Ribbon Cutting and very excited to have that new facility right here in Christiansburg to serve our residents and the airy, airy, uh, community a lot better. Thanks.
The only thing I have is, I would like a head nod or a, I will call for a vote if you need to, but next week is Bill, as Chief Hanks mentioned, is Fire Prevention Week, uh, the 7th through the 13th. And I would like to do a proclamation or resolutions, uh, declaring that week here in town. And the 9th is the actual parade?
Second.
Second.
It's weaker.
Oh, it is? So, it's, okay.
We had to adjust for council.
Okay. Very good.
We used to hold it on. Fire Prevention Week's always the second week of October, so it got to be tough for us to have a parade on council meeting night because no one could get to.
It shouldn't be surveyed now since you're not blowing sirens.
I got special.
Sorry?
People couldn't make it to council. People couldn't make it to midnight.
That's right. Sometimes that's not a bad. Okay, so do I have a head nod or a?
Yeah.
You're good?
Yeah.
All right. Showalter?
Oh.
All right.
I make a motion for a closed meeting in accordance with Code of Virginia 2.2-371129 for discussion of the award of a public contract involving the expenditure of public funds including interviews of vendors or offerers and discussions of the terms or scope of such contract where discussion in an open session would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body. Discussion pertains to the former Truman-Wilson Land Development Contract and, and receipt of a Public Private Education Facilities and Infrastructure Act of 2002, otherwise known as the PPEA, um, proposal for development of the land as a park.
I second.
Got a motion and a second? Madam Clark?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sachs?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
That is 501, we'll take about a three or four minute recess and we'll convene a closed session.
All right, I move to certify that the town council of the town of Christiansburg meeting a closed meeting and to best of each member's knowledge, discussed only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law and only such matters as are identified in the resolution enter into closed meeting.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Madam Clark?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sachs?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
That's 501, absent, thank you very much. Uh, council action on the matter?
I move to accept the PPAA proposal for development of the land as a park and open bidding for 60 days.
I second it. Got a motion and a second? Any discussion? Hearing nine, Madam Clark?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sachs?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
That's 501. We are, anything else to come before council?
Can I mention one thing?
Yeah, that's why we're here.
Okay, uh, just, uh, we mentioned the food truck rodeo, uh, this weekend and I just wanted to thank DCI and of course, all the town staff, uh, for making the event as incredible as it is year in and year out. Um, I work, I, I work with a lot of people living in our, our neighboring municipalities and communities and it's an envy, as many people as you get. It's, I think we're just, you know, our downtown accommodates.
Yeah.
Such a large amount of people and DCI really facilitates us a great event, so I'd like to just throw a thanks out there to DCI and staff.
They work very hard. Casey worked really hard on that, he's becoming an intricate member as the, uh, that brings me to another subject. Andrew, you have been the liaison to DCI for years. With your new role, are we better served? We could be better served because you've done a heck of a job, but I mean, is it, is it makes sense now that maybe Casey take that role?
I think it's kind of been more, you have a natural kind of changeover and he has been attending more meetings, uh, and, uh, and so I will, I will, uh, continue to go on occasion and update on projects that, that Casey may not be as familiar with, but I think on a monthly basis that, that probably, I think Casey has that intention to keep, uh, attending those meetings. And I think it is important, as also with the Montgomery Museum, to have that staff presence there.
So, is there any type of motion or resolution or document we need or we're just going to... to tell them and say, he's it?
Yeah, I think it's just a matter of.
Or tell them to watch the end of this meeting tonight. They'll know what they've been eating.
We'll send them the last.
We can send them some type of a letter. All righty. Anything else to come before council?